This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting, public meeting for Tuesday, September 17th. This meeting is called to order. You will note that this is not our normal background. As we do each year now, we are able to go to each of the schools during the school year to do a meeting, and we're starting out our road trip for the 2024-2025 school year here at Council Rock. And we thank Matt and Katie for inviting us in, and we're going to hear more about what's going on in the school in a little bit. To begin with, at all public meetings, we allow for the opportunity for public participation. Is anyone here who would like to provide feedback or ask any questions of the board? Seeing none, we'll move along. Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda. You've all had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any questions, comments, or edits? Motion to approve the agenda as received.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Also on here, we have the minutes that you have since received from Kim. Thank you, Kim, for the September 3rd, 2024 business meeting. Any questions, comments, or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve those minutes as received.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? We are in Council Rock, as I noted earlier, and we are now going to have a chance to get a facilities improvement plan update. We're going to have a host of people come up and talk a little bit about the school, starting with Lou Alimo, with some help from the brains of the outfit, John Novelli, and then we'll have some other folks come up as well. Lou?
Good evening. I'm excited to kick off our capital campaign for the 2024 Council Rock Primary School Phase Two project. Tonight, we're going to introduce the project. I'm here with our OECM team, and I'm going to ask Principal Tappin to start off and introduce kind of the objectives of it. Have John Novelli, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, talk to some of the current structural differences between the buildings, or classrooms, excuse me. And we have our partners at SWBR, Joe Kusorick, is going to outline the scope as the architect, and Nick Capolito from Campus Construction is going to talk about the construction implications, and then I'll close up with the financial implications of the project. So with that, I'll introduce Principal Tappin.
Good evening, everyone. Principal Tappin here. So, welcome to Council Rock. We're glad to have you. What people may not know, because we are shiny and beautiful and new as you walk into our building, our library, our hallways, they all look pristine. But in Phase One, we did a lot of work in the additions, a lot of work in new classrooms and kind of some of the shared spaces. The old classrooms really didn't receive much, except, which is also huge, HVAC, air conditioning, heating, and some other safety things. So not much was done with the old. So really, we're looking within this, and everyone else is going to give a lot more details, about bringing some of those old classrooms to a new standard, as well as looking at some of our outside spaces to continue to develop those. So with that, I will turn it over, as it was said, to the brains and John Novelli.
Good evening. So, as Matt was saying, you know, we were able to accomplish a lot during the first phase. The new addition came out beautiful. Everything is shiny and new, and not so with the existing classrooms. It's not that they are unusable or unsafe. They just need some updating. We have, these rooms were built in 1957. We have asbestos flooring. We have asbestos wall tiles. The plumbing is original. The lighting is old. So, you know, we're looking just to really bring everything up to date. One of our, again, is, as I said, you know, it's not that the classrooms are not safe, but asbestos is a big concern for us if there happens to be something that goes wrong. If we were to have a pipe break underneath one of these cabinets, there's no easy fix for that. That is basically having to shut down the entire wing, having to remove the built-in cabinry, having to have an abatement company come in and abate it, and that could shut down the wing for a week, and we just don't have the space to move the kids that we would need to. So what we're looking to do in improving these classrooms is abate all of the floor tile, wall tile, remove all of the built-in cubbies, center island, get rid of all the chalkboards. All of the asbestos will be gone. It'll be, everything will be drywall on the walls. We will have new LED lighting, which is going to be more energy efficient. We are going to have brand-new plumbing. We're going to get to the point where we don't need to worry at night that something's going to go wrong in one of these rooms, and we're going to end up having an issue.
A point you brought up to us before, too, John, that I would add is, these rooms, from an electrical standpoint, aren't prepared for having to charge up laptops and do a lot of the things that are required now. So the electric there is old and desperately needs to be updated.
That's correct. It was very limited from when they first got designed. Same thing with the Promethean boards. You know, in all of the new classrooms, the Promethean boards are actually mounted to the walls. It saves a lot of floor space, this, this, and that. Because of the asbestos, we can't mount those to the wall. So right now, they all sit on large floor stands, which take up a lot of room. So moving forward, we're hoping to be able to accomplish all of this by removing everything, putting everything in there that is going to be mobile and more user-friendly, and, you know, we will make it a place that is the best learning experience for our kids. Any questions?
Can I say ditto? John stole all my thunder here. Next slide, please? I am, next. All right. To break down what John gave us, an overview of four areas, scope of work here, site work, roof reconstruction, looking at the 31 classrooms that were not primarily touched in Phase One, and the east, west, and south wing corridors, tile replacement, that would be tile, wainscot, flooring, and doors. Site work. We looked at this project in 2017, if you can believe it, and there's an opportunity to improve the site. We had conversations with Principal Tappin and discussed opportunities for expanding play areas outside. So outdoor synthetic turf on the lower west side, it might be challenging to see where the building is, but that floor plan is the addition from the 2017 Phase One Capital Project. So creating a synthetic surface there that can be cleaned, and that allows exterior play to happen into later months of the year. That also creates a safer area where the surface is significantly smoother. On the east side, so the southeast side of the building, you can see the expansion, so just north of the play area that was provided in the 2017 Phase One project. This capital project will expand that area with a rubber surface and also be accessible, accessible play equipment. Minor roofing in this project. Most of the roofing was done in the 2017 Phase One project. So the northwest section and the area over the art room, and you can see that's the art room right there. So it's a lighter shade. That lighter shade is a ballast-it roof. It's stone. The stone holds down the rubber membrane. So that area and the area on the northwest wing will be replaced with similar surface, the rubber or EPDM membrane roofing that the rest of the building has. Looking at making consistent instructional space. So in 2017, the addition and other areas within the addition and adjacent were updated, were provided with flexible learning. And so the opportunity to provide consistent and equitable classroom spaces for the remaining 31 classrooms in the northwest, northeast, and south. So they're considered the west, east, and south wings, and you can see they're boxed out with your red lines there. Little view of, rendering of what's proposed and what's existing in each of the west, east, and south wings. Looking at opportunities for furring out the walls or creating a space for technology to run without conduit. As Larry mentioned, increasing opportunity for electronic devices to be plugged in, upgrading the electrical in these areas, upgrading the toilet rooms as they exist in their existing footprint. There may be an opportunity to provide some accessible toilet rooms in the northeast wing or the east wing, as we refer to it. So the flooring, walls, lighting will all be replaced. Phase One, the mechanical or HVAC, so the heating, cooling, and also the fire suppression or sprinkler system for safety. Our schedule and design, we've been in pre-referendum, and we're, as you know, we'll be going to a referendum vote December 4th. At that time, when the vote passes, we would conduct the first of three design phases, schematic design, then design development for four months, and then your construction document phase for the following three months, anticipating SED submission in September of next year, 2025. Any questions?
Thank you, Jill. So to continue with the schedule, assuming that we get out to SED for September of '25, that would give us an anticipated bid timeframe of April or May of 2026. So even though it is September of '24 right now, just goes to show you how far and how much work it takes to get to this point. So if we have that bid in April or May of 2026, that means that our construction could start summer of '26. And then just want to share with you that the scope of the work is going to be accomplished, not only during the summers, but throughout the school year as well. We're going to work with Principal Tappin and the rest of the district to coordinate what that looks like. We are going to have to shift around some rooms and make some accommodations to make the work happen, but there's a lot of work to do, and those are some of the things that we will have to handle. So what will be the construction impact on the Council Rock community, starting in 2026? Multiple classrooms will be relocated as we renovate each of the other classrooms. We are looking at roughly four classrooms at a time. I believe Principal Tappin and his staff have identified, or will identify, four swing space areas that will allow us to work on four classrooms throughout the year. We're going to continue to rotate through those and to get through 31. That means it's almost eight groupings of classrooms that we're going to have to handle. You're going to see contractor trailers, equipment, and parking. That's going to utilize space in and around the parking lots and school grounds. We haven't fleshed that out entirely yet, but we just want to be realistic and paint the picture for you. You are going to see job trailers. You are going to see storage trailers. You are going to see fencing. You are going to see dumpsters, and that's going to be for the duration of the project. Lastly, the playground area will be closed when we are actually doing the construction of the addition. We are going to make sure that we keep that open as long as humanly possible and try to coordinate that work during the summer. We will be at the mercy of the contractor for availability, timeline, and what lead times look like, but I do want to be upfront with you that at some point, that playground area will need to close in order for us to do the additional work that we are planning on. Can I answer any questions about any of that stuff for you?
What's the guesstimated, and I know it's a huge guess, of the time that the playground would be closed? And is it not, is it through the whole construction?
Having done the playgrounds at French Road recently, I can say that the amount of work that is involved there, it's probably, this is if everything goes great, so...
Everything will.
Everything will, of course. It's probably anywhere from two to four months' worth of work for us to prep the area. Honestly, the easy part is, once they get the materials on-site, building it, and then putting in the portable surface. But I don't know, I haven't seen all the scopes of work, as Joe's team is still identifying that, what we need to do to prep that area to even do the additional playground. So I can't fully speak to that.
I would just add, Nick, and maybe Lou was going to say this. From a communication standpoint, I know your team's working with Dan Goldman in terms of how we'll be communicating to people what's happening and what's going on with things, once we have that information. So like the neighborhood and everybody else knows what's going on.
Absolutely. So this is just the mere morsel to start with, but plenty more information to come.
So special thanks to the team. This is something that we've really been working on for, since the completion of the Phase One project. We've stayed engaged with SWBR, thinking about this project, planning it. They were very helpful in developing the building condition survey, and certainly we've been continuing partnership with campus in managing all our construction since the 2017 project. So I appreciate your partnership and you being here tonight. So for the financial impact, the proposed cost of the project is $19,125,000. We are proposing to use $3 million of our capital reserve, existing capital reserve, to offset the local share. With that, we are expecting to maximize the building aid on this at 71... 79.1%. And again, this has been a project that we've been contemplating for five years now. We needed to wait for the building aid units, essentially the building aid to reset after the first project. We maximized it in order to build the new addition and to improve all the infrastructure within the building that we accomplished in Phase One. We had to wait five years for it to reset, and this is our first opportunity to really finish the project, so we can get Council Rock on the same long-term planning schedule as the other three buildings. The net local share, then, over a 15-year amortization period, is just about $3.3 million. So if you break that down, and certainly we partnered with our financial consultant to do this analysis, it's about $218,000 that we'd have to levy in new taxes in the year, over the 15-year period, excuse me. So that represents about 0.36% of the current tax levy, and as we project that out and with expected borrowing, it would be about $18 per year. So this does have a tax impact, given the magnitude of the work that's still needed to be done in this building, is part of the presentation that we want to be transparent with the community. Some would say, why aren't we using more reserves to offset that? And the reality is, there's a lot of work to do in the rest of the buildings. We have $38 million worth of work going on, but we still have infrastructure and work. So every year, we're going to be doing some type of capital work. So we're recommending to the board that we be prudent with the existing capital reserves and spread those out more equitably, so we can make sure that we can achieve everything we need to in each of the four buildings. The other piece of it, too, is, we were very transparent and open and honest with the community in the 2017 project. In all of our literature, we asked for that car payment. As Dr. McGowan said in every presentation, we're trying to build in that car payment, so we don't have to ask for any additional money in the future for capital. We could be strategic about our capital reserves and try to stay within our means within that levy. We honored that commitment to the community, and in fact, as we applied, as the sport of education, applied more cash to the large 2017 project, and the, you know, favorable interest rates that we've been able to achieve, we actually, we far exceeded that commitment. So the impact, as of right now, over the course of the 15 years for what ultimately turned out to be a $69 million project, is $95. So the board can say, with full integrity, that we honored our commitment in 2017, and we didn't raise the taxes that we needed to, or that were authorized at the referendum, excuse me. However, because of that, and the amount of work that still needs to be done, the significant cost escalations that we've had over these last five years, we are asking for a little bit more of that initial car payment to be able to complete the work at Council Rock, and then again, use our reserves strategically over the next 10 years to mitigate any future tax impact through capital. And obviously, when we adopt the tax cap levy, every single year, we're accountable for that number. That's a very discreet presentation of our tax cap number, is the capital levy exclusion. So again, that's what we're trying to use over the next couple of months, try to tell that story, to educate, be very transparent and open and honest with the impact of this project, where that money is being spent, and what we expect, what we expect the results to be. So with that, I will entertain any questions, and again, my gratitude to the team for being here tonight and for, you know, all the hard work that was put into just even developing this proposal for the board's consideration, and ultimately, the community's consideration.
Just a quick question, maybe more for Principal Tappin, but how was the staff receiving the idea for this project? I know we're a couple of years away from anything, but just generally well-regarded?
Without knowing too many of the details, because that's where we can get mired, they're excited about the idea of bringing some of the other classrooms up to a standard that is equal or that has some of the same amenities that the back classrooms have. We'll be working out all those details, which will be questions, but we've lived through it before, and we will strategically live through it again, so.
I think I just make note of two things. One is that that vote's coming up the first week of December, was it December 4th? Was that the day?
Yes.
December 4th, thank you, Kim. And secondly, we're talking about construction that would take place, as I think Nick pointed out, starting middle of '26. We're in September of '24 right now, so this is a ways off, sort of to Matt's point. There's not a lot to think about, because we're still very much in the planning phase, based on what all the folks said. So any other questions from the board with regards to this project as it moves along?
I had one question, and I know this is so far off, and Mr. Tappin, maybe you don't know the answer, but when they have to close the playgrounds, where would the children be able to have recess and time to play? Because play is so important to young children.
So I don't know for sure what that looks like, but we still have a play space over here that is separate from the field. We're hoping that we would be able to use. And then we have green space over here that's separate from, we have some spaces that we would be able to do. And from experience, when we had really no place, but we made three places, they weren't ideal, but they were outside, they were more space to have some gross motor and moving. We were able to figure that out, and it might mean adjustment. So I don't know exactly, but it might mean every other day recess outside, you know, so that we have equity within all the classrooms, being able to get out if we don't have the space. But we do have, despite we're being tight on the green space, we have spaces that we believe we would be able to use to get kids out and make sure that they were getting fresh air, getting exercise, and getting time for play, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all. To Lou's point, thank you all very much for the work you've done to this point. We know we're going to hear more over the next couple of months, so thank you very much. Do you want to make any additional comments?
No, I would just join Mr. Davis in thanking everybody that's been a part of it in each of these projects. It's really remarkable. We walked through classrooms earlier with each of you, those that are not in this building regularly, that are seeing this broadcast. Part of the coming to different buildings is to highlight these things, too. This is an entirely different learning space for kids than it ever was before. Same idea if you walk into the high school auditorium, if you walk into, and a month from now, the gym at the high school, or at French Road, or all of the spaces throughout the district. I think about places in the middle school as well, that are so different than they were before, and we're on that road of continuing to upgrade our facilities and find that consistency in physical environment that is connected to a really great learning experience, and a physical environment that equals that learning experience that kids have, and only enhances it. So appreciate all the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we're going to hear for the first time this school year from the principals. We're sitting here in Council Rock, so it probably makes the most sense to hear from Tom Hall first.
I always said you make great decisions, President. Let's just find my PowerPoint. So I think today's the 12th day, maybe, of school, so, you know, things have been happening since July 1st, and just cruising from there. Our opening week of school really begins with the freshman class, Class of 2028. This year, we welcomed them at the middle school gym, because our gym is under construction. We cannot wait for it to open, but our kids were great. The middle school students had actually kind of set the tone, you know, they started the middle school again, and then we walked across the creek and went into the high school for the individual sessions and groups. So our Link Crew members in pink, with all the new freshmen, welcoming them in, in the middle school. It was a great time. The Link Crew does all sorts of fun activities, welcomes our kids in, did tours, and they're holding Link sessions once a cycle from now until the middle of January. For our senior families, we, the yearbook staff finally put out the notice to all senior families for their quotes, their pictures, some information that each senior will need to know about the particulars about each picture. You can do the QR code, and if you look at the type font, it kind of looks like something out of the 1933 Brighton High School yearbook. So I think I know where they're going with their theme this year, looking a little bit nostalgic, but looking first, and excited, crossroads, staff, and a good year ahead. First day of school, new tradition. Traditions are always starting in Brighton. They do the sunrise now. So the seniors, there are probably about 125 kids out on the turf doing the sunrise, and then I believe on the last day of classes, that night, they'll be on the turf watching the sun set. They also have their cookout, cooking and grilling, and doing all sorts of fun things. Looking forward to this class of 2025. Quite an amazing group. We're also in the middle of reunion tours. If you didn't know, we give reunion tours to all of the classes who ask for it, and of course, I always ask them for money for PTSA Support Fund. And the Class of '74 is a group that we met with this past Saturday. We're meeting with the Class of '84 this Saturday, give them a tour of the high school. This is a group of about 80 people from the Class of '74. Amazed to see how much has gone on in the high school, and what a great, wonderful, positive group of people, and all very happy with their experience in Brighton and all such cool stories. I learn something new every single class that we meet with. We started out our year doing what we normally do. We pulled the kids grade by grade into the auditorium. Jabrel, Mark, myself, Matt, and Betsy, all meeting and greeting the kids and going through just what we want to do to set the expectations for the year. And of course, we always go back to our mission statement. We want everybody to feel like they belong, they're welcome, feeling that this is a professional environment, and we're all having to work to make that mission a reality. Of course, our five qualities. Introducing our new administrators like Jabrel, welcoming Betsy back to the high school, talking about our counselors and who they are and what they do, introducing our exec council, and then for each class, we introduce their class officers, talking to them about, they're the people that are supposed to be representing you. Talk to them. They'll hopefully share your ideas and speak with us. And then jumping into just how we want people to behave during the year and treat one another with respect. Done with the derogatory hateful language. The F-word, the N-word, and the R-word are something we've been talking about for two years now. We want to eradicate that from the high school. It's not just joking. Words have consequences, and they hurt. We also addressed anti-Semitic, anti-Israel, anti-Palestinian, anti-Islamophobic, or Islamophobic rhetoric, and, you know, I think the kids really appreciate that, hearing it, and where we're going to stand right from day one. Go through our emergency protocols. Again, thanks Teresa for organizing that last year. Everybody's really, I think, K-12 now. We're all on the same page. We're using the same language. Attendance and punctuality, this was something we picked up and shared with the kids about. Just missing two days a month, and over the course of a school year, the course of, you know, multiple school years, how many months and hours of class you actually miss. And attendance is important. Got to throw the Star Wars jokes in there. We want everybody to be on time. We start at 7:45, and it seems like after the first three weeks or four weeks, people think we start at 7:50 or 7:55 and 8 o'clock. It's still 7:45. Just gets harder. We also went over our electronic device policy, really hitting that, trying to be a little humorous, but we had our CCLT meeting today, and we asked students, pretty much, how's the phone policy going? And for the most part, it's been very positive. And the kids, even though they have to put their phones away in these pouches now, for about probably half the classes, they're doing it. We talked about open campus, how great that is to have. We are one of a very few schools that have an open campus policy like we do, but we are telling kids that if you're failing two or more classes, open campus is gone. It's a privilege, not a right. And finally, with the students, just saying, you know, when we have possible altercation... And finally, with the students, just saying, you know, when we have possible altercations or getting into a verbal conflict, we don't want it to be a physical conflict. There are off-ramps, and we're asking students to just walk away from those issues. If you see something, say something. Go over the Safe Schools helpline. And, you know, the Brighton spirit, Bruin spirit is alive and well. This is one of the home, the first homecoming or home football game. Huge crowd, red, white, and blue night, everybody had fun. Homecoming is this week. Hopefully, we'll see out there, maybe at the pep rally Thursday night, Saturday with the parade. There's Friday night, there's a field hockey game. Saturday, the football game at 2, soccer game at 4:30. And of course, our dance at the middle school for Brighton students will be hosting it. Thank you, Danielle. She said she'd be there all night to make sure everything goes well, so I'm really thankful for that, Danielle. Appreciate it. All the kids can't wait to see you again. But that's going on, lot of great spirit. I love the spirit days tomorrow. If you want to come to the high school, you'll see a bunch of teenage administrators, so we can't wait to do that. The priority area that you asked us to talk about this month is mental health and wellness and our goals for the district and goals for the high school. I bolded, we have several, this is the largest priority area for us as a high school as far as as many things as we're trying to do. The behavioral partnership with URM-C is going strong. There was a meeting today, I couldn't attend, but I know they talked about a lot of our students. We still have students who are getting access to mental health care right in the building, which I think is very valuable. Continuing to support kids who are not connected to the high school. All of our counselors and administrators are meeting with those 10th and 10th through 12th graders that we identified last year through surveys, through individual teacher feedback, club advisors, coaches, the kids who are not involved in anything. We're calling each kid down and we're talking to them about how to get involved. We have an assembly on Thursday in homeroom. It's a 23-minute clip, funny video, just talking about our clubs and activities and then having them explore online all the different clubs and activities we do. The cell phone policy, implementing that, we'll have more to talk about maybe mid-year when we get some feedback. Participation in our clubs and activities. If you walk through the high school, you'll see more evidence of our clubs and activities thanks to our school-based equity team, CCLT, promoting the clubs, having access to what they are. You'll see it all over the building now, more than you ever have before. That's the club wall that was the idea that generated through school-based equity. That's what it looks like. Every single club, a description of the club and the advisor of the club is listed. Teachers send kids down there to see it. And many advisors today said they were getting emails from kids asking about joining the club that they said they never had received before this early in the year. And I think it's all because of that board. And we have about 10 of these new boards around, what's Bruin Clubs and Activity Information. We have a lot of events coming up, Homecoming, Open House next week, Club and Activity Fair. That's the high school. Any questions?
No, it sounds great, active as always, questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Hall. Colleen?
Hi, good to be back. We've had a very busy start to our school year. Couple of things I didn't have pictures for, so I did want to mention on our welcome back. It was great having Mrs. Wheeler back on the first day, as well as Mr. Simmons, Artosa, who's been fantastic addition to the flow of Front Road as a whole. Some of the things you won't see pictures for, but have been happening, have included, we've done grade level meetings with each grade level. We've started our IM recruitment, that is our instrumental music recruitment for our current fourth graders. We've been busy with that. We've done one of our two curriculum nights, and we're also in the process of doing our bus drills. So we don't have pictures, but those are some of the busy things that are happening. We've also been very grateful for the blue skies, which you can see in this picture as we've been working, getting ready for our new gym. Prior to the start of the school year, I was able to tap into last year's fifth graders, which are our current sixth graders, and they helped me with our new student orientation. So I called a couple of front, a couple of parents, asked for them to pull some friends together. Most of these kids were our student council members last year, and they came in and they helped greet our new students. They gave chores of the building, and then they let our kids out to the popsicles with the principal, which our PTSA put on. So I was very grateful to have our student council and current sixth grade friends from TCMS, and we're hoping to continue that next year. At Popsicles with the Principals, I have three new representatives leading us at Front Road this year. So they jumped right on board, they helped create our Popsicle with Principal event. I believe we had about 300 people there. If you looked out on the playground, it was pretty packed. Families were able to use the playground, which was very exciting. We weren't able to do that last year, it wasn't open yet. We had popsicle, little temporary tattoos being put on kids, and there's just lots of conversation with families and with students. So it was a great way to kick off coming back to school the following week. Also, we did our urban suburban welcome back night, and you'll see in those pictures, Mr. Tappan and myself, we joined forces with our kids. We brought them out to the playground to play, were able to talk to parents as we came back in. A lot of little friends there, you see a lot of kids from Council Rock, but there were a couple of our Front Road kids there as well. Going into our welcome back with staff, I kind of jumped on board with the theme of joy that Dr. McGowan spoke to on opening faculty meeting. We use the theme of inside out, too, and talking about all the emotions kids bring to school, as well as adults. And we talked a lot about how we show up for all those emotions that come to school each day and our responsibility of leading our kids and ourselves and our peers to core memories of joy and not sadness when they leave school each day. So I asked the PTSA if they would join forces with me as we welcomed our staff back. And you can see they put on a little popcorn party, complete with popcorn, which is our yellow representing joy. Once we got into our opening faculty meeting, you'll see a lot of collaboration amongst our faculty and staff. We did a welcome back, getting to know you. I think we had close to 16 or 17 new staff members at Front Road this year. So we needed to make sure we had the opportunity to get to know everyone, as well as introduce people who have been there. We worked a lot on our norms and our values that we had within our PLCs. We connected a little bit to what we did at a retreat this summer by creating our own quote of arms within the PLCs. So you can see everyone is pretty engaged and active. And then we ended up, ended with activity from inside out, too, as well. And then here's a couple happy faces. We had students come back to help greet our teachers to an opening faculty meeting with our PTSA. So it was great to see all the smiles. This past weekend, we joined the PTSA, lots of PTSA themes this month, with our Brighton Believes 5K. And we tied with Council Rock with having the equal number of participants, I guess. But there was over 200 kids there and families, so it was another opportunity that you could connect with families, connect with students. It was a ton of fun. You can see in the top right, we had a lot of participants from Front Road as well, joining our kids. So that was wonderful. And I think that's it on the pictures. As we look at our mental health wellness and student supports, I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been working on so far, just in the month that we've been at school. The first one was working on our restorative practices and our work with our consultants from Bozies. We've been working with Kyle and Svetlana. We've been working on restorative practices with our faculty and also working on our leadership teams. So we're working with them on our team leaders, which we did last week. They'll be working with our school-based equity team. They'll be working with the faculty in September. And then they'll also be bringing on students on board as part of the restorative practices and as we move into the inclusive language protocols. So we're excited about the work that we'll be doing with them. As far as restorative practices, we're going to be building that into our classroom management and how we connect with kids, how we connect with our colleagues, and how that impacts our flow of the day and how we connect with one another. And then as far as fostering joy in school, we're just trying to bring those moments of joy into the classroom as well and to opportunities with the faculty. As we look at the rest of the month, we've had a lot prior to the board meeting, but we do have our last curriculum night tomorrow night, and that's grades four and five. We'll also be in attendance at Homecoming on Saturday. We have our welcome back family picnic on the 27th. I keep checking the darkness outside and making sure that we're timing that correctly, that late in September. And then on the 30th, we'll be doing our school pictures. So we've had a lot at the beginning of the month, and we're wrapping up in the next few weeks.
Get your hands full. I do want to make note, you brought this up, and I heard Dr. Hall say it as well. Lou can comment or not, but we do have two gyms that are not quite done yet. I believe the schedule for your gym, Colleen, is October 1st?
I, it looks like it's moving along quite well. The whole floor is there, we're just waiting for the painting coming. So we have a backup rain day plan, but we have not had to use that yet, so we've been very fortunate.
I appreciate your and the staff's patience to get that done. It's going to be great, and we hope it's on time, but it does require you all to move around a little bit because you don't have a space to use. So our thanks on behalf of the board for sort of working around that. We do think, like we think with the high school, the final product's going to be absolutely fantastic and even better than what was there before. So thanks to your staff and Dr. Hall's staff as we work through all that. Lou, I think the high school gym is 10:31 and the French Road gym is 10:01. If everything goes well, fingers crossed and all that, correct? Other questions or comments for Colleen and French Road?
Hi, thank you.
Show the power of popsicles. That's very well done. Middle school?
No, it's exciting to be here. And the start of the school year, honestly, it's my third actual full start of a school year. And I have to say that the minute the kids came into school, it was the smoothest start yet. The sixth graders, I can't even describe just kind of the level of calm that they came into the building with and like confidence. And I owe that all to the tons of work that the counselors did prior to school starting and communicating with families. We spent the summer really meeting with a lot of families, anybody that wanted to come in to kind of look at the building, look at, you know, the general sixth grade area, get a sense, meet a counselor. We did that all summer long. And then the orientation that we had with the TCMS Strong really also helped students acclimate to where they were going. And then, of course, the wonderful kindness that our sixth grade teachers show. So the sixth graders just acclimated really well. And kudos also to our seventh and eighth graders who just decided like, hey, this is our building. We're going to be leaders and we're going to do it, and we're going to show everybody where to go and how to do it. And it's just, you know, 12 days in, just like a sense of calm. We had an emergency drill today, you know, our evacuation drill out just to the football field. And even that just felt like there was a calmness to it. Everybody was just kind of going about their way. Everybody found where they needed to be. Everybody sat down, took a tense, like it just, it just feels really good. So knocking on wood for this to kind of take us through the whole year. I think we've got a great set of students, a great set of families, and of course, a great set of staff. So I always love the first day of school, especially when our middle schoolers still take their pictures with their sign because, you know, sometimes middle schoolers are a little too cool for this kind of stuff. But these folks really enjoyed and dove into it, and these are some of our favorites in the building, for sure. At TCMS this year, beyond the first day of school, one of the things that we talked about, this came from last year. We spent a lot of time as a building in the spring, really looking at data. We looked at thought exchange data, both from the blueprint, but also from our culture and climate survey for our students, for our staff, and for our community members. We also looked at some of the feedback that we got from Katora, from ReCenter. We looked at some internal surveys. We looked at trends in marking period failures. We looked at discipline and trends over time. And out of all of that, we kind of came up with what seems like a lot, but they all kind of fit under a nice umbrella of these five topics that are going to be our guiding work for, I will say this year, but I will say really this is kind of like a strategic plan of sorts. This is not going to be a one and done. And our five areas that all nestle right into the blueprint work, our sense of belonging, which fits in with our mental health, excuse me, mental health and wellness, but also our student experience and family experience. So always and continuing to work on creating a culture that all students and all staff want to be a part of. So we've got some new things that I'll tell you about at our next faculty meeting that are going to help contribute to that and also bring voice to all of our students and let them be heard and lifted in our, in our school community. We're kind of following on the heels of the work that the high school has started in their grading for equity journey. And so we'll be doing our own journey, starting this year at the middle school and doing some of our own research, and particularly with the lens of middle school and what's developmentally appropriate for middle schoolers. So that's another arm of our work this year. Cultures of thinking, we kind of have two strands of that. One is kind of like a making thinking visible strand. And then the other strand is going to be work with writing as thinking through, work through Bard College that Becky Wiggins and Julie Kopp are going to lead. Behavior and discipline, looking at how do we promote positive behavior? How do we integrate system-wide our restorative practices to support students? And then communication on lots of different levels. So communication with the community and making sure that they know everything that is going on and how to be a part of things, but also internally, how we're communicating the important information that we need to communicate. So we've got kind of the challenge that I put out for staff is that I want everybody, my hope is that everybody will join at least one of those committees that they feel passionate about, that they have information that they want to share about and that they can be a part of making TCMS what we want it to continue to be. So we're excited about that. It's a lot, but it's, like I said, it's not going to be a one-year journey, but this is the start in it. And it's, it all nestles nicely into the work that we're doing in the blueprint. It just kind of like TCMS sizes it, I guess, if you can say that as a verb. So we're excited about that. So that kind of, you know, is the work that we did with staff and unpacking all of that in our first day of school. And then, of course, we talked about new student orientation. And I just have to own the fact that I failed on the picture-taking on orientation day. I did, I just did, and I apologize. But Stacy Kugel and the TCMS Strong kids had such an amazing setup and welcoming, kind of like tunnel for the kids to walk through and be excited in. And then they had all of their different groups. They learned about technology, they learned about team building, they learned about the school, all of the good things. And it went, it went really, really well. We also had, just this past week, our PTSA meeting with the principal. And I think we had almost 25 parents there, which is one of the higher rates of attendance that we've had. And so we talked about, you know, some guiding principles for TCMS, but there's a lot of time for question and answer. And folks were really awesome and had some wonderful questions about supporting their students and also how they can get involved as families to be a part of our community. We also tried a new curriculum night format out last week. And, you know, the old format that we used was basically like parents, all of the parents in the building were invited, six through eight, and they would follow their student's schedule. So they would go to 10 minutes for period one, and 10 minutes for period two, and 10 minutes for period three. And that offered quite a frenetic pace for parents. I felt like over the last few years, watching parents like freak out in the hallway about how to get from class to class was very stressful for me, and I wasn't even them. You know, my joke always is, though, they're like, where's room 415? And I'm like, I've been here for 20 years. I have no idea where room 415 is. It doesn't make any sense. But if you ask me who the teacher is, I can get you there. So we decided to make a little change because of like that recognizing the frenetic pace, but also noticing, again, thinking about the feedback from thought exchange that we got from the community, both in the blueprint thought exchange, the Culture and Climate Committee, and also at the Blueprint Committee meeting. Parents talking about the different platforms that we have and that we use in the district and really not knowing how to navigate them. So we built in an intentional block into our curriculum night so that parents could view a general presentation from all of the grade level core area teachers. They would have opportunity to learn about the different technology platforms, and then there was an opportunity for a meet and greet. Selfishly, and this was like kind of like a side thing that came out of it, I actually loved the panel part where the teachers were up and, you know, all three seventh grade English teachers got up and talked about, this is what we can guarantee that every seventh grade student will learn in seventh grade English. And this is what we can guarantee that every seventh grade student will learn in math. And it was really cool to hear the feedback from staff to say, the best part of the night was me sitting and listening to all the things that the other teachers are doing in their classes. I know they talk about it every day when they meet in team, but I think in that more formalized setting, actually listing out the units, the themes, the assessment strategies and so forth was a really great bridge for our staff and gave what I think is so important, which is like a promise, a pact with families, like this is what you all can expect that every student will have, regardless of what team they're on, they're all going to have this experience. So all of that to say, we're now in the feedback gathering mode. So I created a thought exchange for staff, and then I created a thought exchange for families that just went out today. As you can imagine, it's all over the board just in looking at it today, right? So pros, cons, and now our job is to kind of take the next couple of months to look at, what are the things that we can pull to make this an even more efficient and effective night for folks? So we tried something new. I was super proud of the staff. I said to- I said to them, um, on Friday morning, like I just went home and, um, I was so proud of the fact that they pivoted so quickly in this format and we're excited to do it. So it was, it was really great. Fall sports are absolutely in, in full spring, uh, full. What am I trying to say? Swing, thank you. Full swing. And there, uh, we've got volleyball all, I feel like all day long in our gym. It goes from like modified to modify to JV to varsity. But, um, their move-in football team is going. We've got the largest, um, cross-country team that I've seen probably in my entire career. I have a picture of them, but there's a ton of students on that cheerleading soccer teams. It's just amazing to see how many students we have going out. We did school pictures last week already and we have our urban suburban ice cream social tomorrow. And then, uh, outdoor ad already is next week. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we'll be heading out to, um, Camp Arrowhead and YMCA. We'll be doing all of the things. So we'll be doing, we'll be creating smores over a fire. We're going to do archery. We're going to do tug of war. We're going to do high ropes. We're going to do low ropes. We're going to do, um, capture the flag. So all of the experiences that the students have had in the past, um, they're going to have out at Camp Arrowhead. Huge benefit for us as we have, uh, trained staff at Camp Arrowhead that we can leverage to help facilitate things. So we're excited about that. And then these are just pictures from the first, these were, you know, the first week of school. I love the picture up on the right because that's the sixth grade hallway. And again, they, like, they were just killing it at their lockers and really just getting into the swing of things and, and taking care of business. Math classes, kids are up figuring things out. Within the first week, our orchestra was ready, already playing. They're creating their projects and their artifact museums. The, the picture in the lower left is our cross-country team. Look at how many kids are on the cross-country team. It's so cool. But just lots of team building activities and getting to know you activities going on. I do have to say, and as an English teacher, I hope you appreciate this. When I started in Brighton, um, over twenty years ago, one of the things that stood out to me the most was, I would walk through the halls and the kids would be reading in the halls. They would be bumping into each other because they were reading their books in the hall. And technology has obviously changed that a little bit. I'm seeing more of what you see in the bottom right-hand corner, um, already this year in the cafeteria. I have teachers telling me, I had to tell him to put his book away because we were working on something else. And I was just like, yes, may that be our biggest problem. So, but it's great, you know, they're all rotating through the library, they're getting their books picked out and, and they're actively engaged. So it's fun to see what the students are reading. Super excited because I actually think that we benefit probably more than they do. But we have Fulbright Scholars again this year. I know Matt, um, has Fulbright Scholars as well. So we have four. We have Maddie from Finland, uh, Angel from the Philippines, Suket from Indonesia and Sumana from India. And they come and they're with us every Tuesday in our classes. They got to experience an evacuation drill today and they were like right in and on it. But they've been in a couple of times. They came in a few times last week as well. So super kind people, but their ability to share their own cultures and their own experiences is just top-notch for our kids. Our aspire program is new this year at seventh and eighth grade and, um, we're super proud about the impact already that it's having on students. Students who are in the program who were not coming to school at all last year have not missed a day yet. We have, uh, at each level, um, I, I would say maybe there's two kids who have actually missed school, but not consistently. They have missed a day and then they came back the next day. So that's all kudos to the environment that both, um, Betsy Paddock and Erin Cusano are creating. But, um, I will also say all the teachers that are rotating in and out and creating those special environments for the students in their core areas. I think the biggest piece that's helping is there's a, a peer, there's a peer, um, network that's happening that Erin is really facilitating to coach the teachers and how to deal with the student behaviors and needs that are in front of them. Um, and they're doing a lot of, in their team meetings, a lot of modeling and debriefing situations and how to, uh, move forward with, with what they're experiencing. So the kids are happy, there's smiles and, uh, it's just fantastic to see. So that's part of our mental health and wellness. We're continuing our SEL, um, lessons during when. We have our sense of belonging committee that's going to continue to do work that I'll share next time, as well as our revamped culture and climate committee in which every single student will have an opportunity to participate in it at least once. Kind of like forced family fun. We're going to make them do it because we want to hear their voices. We've got our wellness committee that's continuing to work and, um, really just trying to build those family connections. Sherry Hellman, who's our registrar in our building, has already reached out to every single new family that, um, and we have, I think we're at forty-six in our building. And she's reached out to every single family already to check in on them, to see how they're doing, to see what they need. And so we're really prioritizing even more than ever the family connections and support. And this is our, our next couple of weeks. We've got outdoor ad, our ENL district family picnic's coming up. And then before we know it, we're into activity nights. Just a note for everybody, in the fall, activity nights are on Saturdays because the high school teams are using the gym on Fridays. And, uh, red ribbon week will be here and then picture retakes. So a lot going on.
Not only has school started, but we're well into it. So thank you very much. Principal Tappin. And thank you again for hosting us tonight.
Thank you for helping. All right. Here we go. All right. Well, once again, welcome. To echo many of the sentiments of my colleagues, it has just been a really smooth, incredible start. And I have something, you know, normally I'm not the data guy, but I've got data to prove it. So, um, so here, this is, was not in what I sent last week because it hadn't happened yet. But Colleen and I are very proud to be the co-champs, not in the run or the walk, but just in the pre, uh, participation, which is all we can offer. People are too fast for us to do that. But thanks to Carrie Lynn and to the PTSA for organizing such an awesome event. Our kids just love being part of it and seeing, uh, the community run, seeing us move and run. Um, so it's really great. So here are some of, you know, the, the data that I have about smiles. This is the first day. But this is more impressive to me. So check this out, timestamp. This is the second day of school, day two, at eight twelve on our bus loop. To not know that we let the buses open up their doors at eight-ten. And eight-twelve, all the buses were there and they were all empty. And they were all already where they needed to be. That's how good the kindergarten, first and second graders were on their second day after just one day of learning their routine. So it's really been, uh, impressive. Kids have been great. We are welcoming two new therapy dogs. I know I have a very bad rap about my love for dogs. But we are welcoming two lovely new dogs, Loki Ball, who's owned by Kim Ball, and Wilson Wolk, um, owned by Stacy Wolk Ocean. They are here part-time. They're not here all the time, but they, uh, are in the building, moving around and they are lovely additions to our staff. So we also did popsicles with the principals. We added after last year, it was the first year we did it, um, and we did it really to introduce Katie Schaefer, our new assistant principal. But we got a lot of really good feedback on how nice it was to come together before school started. One person made a suggestion last year, like, oh, it really would have been nice to know who the kids were in his or her class. So we took that feedback and the bracelets on the bottom, we did colored bracelets, um, for each class. And as they were running around, they were able to see, um, who matched their bracelet and that they were in the same class. It was really, really special to see, the kindergartners were running around, they were like comparing. And then as the first and second graders came back, they were finding out like, wait, you're in my class. Or they were figuring that out. So it was really, um, a great suggestion and great feedback and we were happy, um, to see how successful it was. We had our first curriculum night, uh, last week, yep, last week, and we have two more coming up. But this is the class of two thousand thirty-seven. Great attendance, um, great, uh, great people, uh, sharing in lots of returnees, but lots of first, uh, first-years, uh, parents. For habits of mind, you know, I can't get through a presentation without talking about habits of mind. But, uh, we have four fall-focused habits. They are managing impulsivity, uh, listening with understanding and empathy, responding with wonderment and, uh, taking responsible risks. So although we will focus on all the habits throughout the, the year, those are our focus habits for this fall. And Andrea Yaman takes the lead on introducing those to all of our kids, um, when she comes around for extended studies. So our mental health, uh, wellness and student support, within this in the blueprint, it is about students and supporting students. But there's also been a significant focus on supporting our adults, um, and their wellness and their mental health so that they can be the best that they can be for our students. So within, uh, the support for our students, our counselors have already begun their SEL lessons in classrooms that started on the first, uh, cycle. So they will have a second lesson already completed, um, by now. And again, our program really focuses on building empathy, building understanding, uh, of differences and similarities as well as, uh, problem solving, uh, and going through the problem-solving process. With the addition of our two therapy dogs, they are also here. And then we're really supporting our twelve-one-four students and their teachers in the meaningful integration and continuing to look at what that looks like for our general education students, but also for those students with special needs and making sure that they receive the support, but they also feel that sense of belonging. And supporting our student, or our, our adults to make sure that they're ready for our students, we are introducing an adult wellness lounge, um, that is going to be a permanent, something we used to do kind of on a monthly basis and it was, got really great feedback. So there's quiet music playing, there's like adult coloring, things like that to just completely distress. And we're, we dedicated a room to that, um, this year. It's a small room, but, um, it's a great, hopefully going to be a great addition. And then, um, in talking with our wellness team and looking at the blueprint, really thinking about all the things we've offered for wellness. And I think I'm starting to just understand a little bit more about how everyone in this room, everyone, their own wellness journey is their own and what helps them. So the comment came from, we used to like offer yoga classes after class and people were like, yeah, I would get stressed out because I couldn't make it. And I'm like, oh God, like, I wasn't trying to stress you out. So really just offering the variety and letting people come to it as they are or not, and that's okay. So we started, um, I'm using the book Hundred and Eighty Days of Self-Care, uh, for Busy Educators. And every week it has just a great practical success, uh, suggestions for, um, what you can do as an educator to take care of yourself. So, so far we've talked and I've just put it in and it's voluntary. You take this if this works for you. So the first week was how music affects your mood. Make a playlist, play it at different times during the day, see how that affects you. If that's not for you, skip it. You don't have to do it, but it's there if you want it. And then using, uh, nutrition and hydration, how that affects us. Sleep is next week's, um, to talk about those things. So that's going to continue through, um, the entire school year, just as things they can take advantage of. Some things will fit for someone and some things will be a complete non-fit and that's okay. So don't feel stressed if you can't do it. So really trying to support them in, um, taking control of their own wellness. We've got lots of events coming up. Like I said, first grade curriculum night is on Thursday. We've got our first, uh, ESPIT meeting, um, as a district. We're excited to come together as all of our teams, um, with Dr. Rio, uh, to get us started off and kicked off in the right way. We've got a new event, um, hoping people will show up to it, PTSA Square One. Square One again is a art event, um, where it's a fundraiser, but we had trouble kind of getting participation. So, um, our new art teacher, Ms. Jordan, has retired, but we have Mackenzie Galusha, who is amazing. She's planned, um, an art activity to complete that and it's free and people can come. I think PTSA is going to be serving refreshments, so that's this Friday. Second grade curriculum night, we've got holidays coming up, school pictures, uh, Wednesday, the ninth and Thursday, the tenth of October. And then, uh, our superintendent's conference day and the long weekend. So lots going on coming up.
Wow. What I would say to all four of you as well, just a ton going on and we're only, not even a month into school. So very impressive. Thank you.
If I don't, if I'm just going to pop in for a second, I want to thank all the school-based teams because there's so much that goes into prepping your buildings for the first day of school and then just hearing all the extras that you do to not only welcome the kids, but our community is so incredible. And the feedback that we hear from families, it's really welcoming and warming and you guys go above and beyond. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the approval of three first-read policies. As is required, I'm going to read the policy number and the name of it. First, policy seven-one-five-zero, students, remote instruction. Second, policy seven-five-four-zero, students, suicide. And, uh, third one, C, policy one-five-one-zero, bylaws, regular board meetings and rules. You've all had the chance to review and, uh, read these first-read policies. We'll obviously see them one more time. Any questions with regards to these first reads? Motion to approve as a first read.
So moved?
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Next up, we also have, and this is, uh, we have a, uh, we're working with a, a new law firm, but this is approval of a resolution authorizing intervention in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five tax assessments, uh, proceedings involving the district. We have a new law firm. They, we just are, in this instance, authorizing them to act on our behalf as necessary. And I can never say that, uh, C-word. Serturary?
Serturary claim.
Serturary claim. That, um, is, is.
I speak Latin. I'm not sure if that's. Do you say it quickly enough? It sounds like it's. For a Latin expert, my God, so.
Yeah, Louis over there frowning his brow. Great. Um, but anyways.
As I see, if you just say it with authority, right?
Yes.
Anyways, this is an official step to have our, our new law practice be able to represent us, ask necessary questions with regards to this resolution. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a consent agenda, a bunch of fundraising activities, which means we get a bunch of eating opportunities in September and October and supporting a lot of different programs. In this case, both some music and some sport. So that's great. And you can see all of those right there. And then this is a gift that's absolutely amazing. So I'm going to take a minute and read this gift. It's a gift of an endowment, um, from Lorena M. Harper in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be known as the Lorena McNardy Harper Scholarship, Brighton English teacher, uh, and English department head, excuse me, from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen seventy-five, to be awarded annually in the amount of two thousand to a senior who intends to enroll either at the University of Rochester or Cornell University. And we have kids going to both those schools every year. So this is a great opportunity. We're grateful for, um, Lorena's, uh, Lorena and her family for giving this wonderful gift. But with that, I'll ask for, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Aster?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just a couple of quick notes before we close. We say this every time we travel, we show up. Things are where they're supposed to be. Audiovisual works and that's because of Diane Goldman and Kim Lanza fame. That's because of, in this time, we've got, uh, Bill and Mike who are always with us, but also Joy behind the camera over here. So we thank her as well. Thank you very much. Also, and we've done this a couple of times, we want to say thanks to the Council Rock team that did take us, as I think a couple of you mentioned, on a tour around the building just to see some of the things that are going on. We're grateful for the opportunity to do that. So thanks to John Novelli and the buildings team, to Lou and Principal Tappin and everyone for, for coming around. We greatly appreciate that. I would just ask you to quickly mention, because I think this is important. Between September third and today, a number of us were able to do both the urban suburban greeting and the new families event. And I would have you just make a quick mention of both of those because they're just outstanding events, thanks to Jeff Green and many others.
Well, that, that, let's start there, right? So, uh, Jeff is our Director of Family and Student Engagement, has really headed those up. And we've done now, I mean, we do the urban suburban new family orientation every August. And for, you know, time and phenomenon, that, that's been what we've done. But it was many years ago, it was really just this pretty mundane meeting in the boardroom and people would come and, you know, receive some information largely from the urban suburban program associates and then a little bit from the district. And that was it. Over time, they grew and I would give credit to the principals because they were in, intimately involved in creating experience for the kids there. Bringing them out of the room with kind of the sit and get for their parents and connecting with them individually and welcoming them to the school environment. And it only grew from there to now. It's, uh, an event where we serve food, where we really, I think as a district are saying that we are so fortunate you've chosen us. We are blessed that you are a part of us. You are a part of us in every way. We are thrilled, we are excited and we just got better because you chose us. And entirely different feel and event and this team and Jeff have really made that happen. Likewise, last night, uh, the program here with families, new families to the district, again, started out as a really great effort. I want to say around two thousand eighteen or so, two thousand nineteen, uh, really just us recognizing that we needed to do more because many of us who've moved into the community recognize it's, if you didn't grow up here, if you don't know everybody, if you don't know how to like get in and know where, who to go to for what, whether it's Little League or Brighton Ambulance, whatever it might be, or Brighton Rock. It's, it's difficult to start to figure those things out, especially as we saw last night, many families from out of the country. You know, they're brand new, not just to Brighton, but to the United States. And so that has also only grown again, really just about everybody on our team who could be here, leadership team, wise and all of you were here last night, along with many counselors and other support staff members. leadership team, wise and all of you were here last night, along with many counselors and other support staff members, to greet 150 people that came. And we're thrilled and it really was entirely about just wrapping our arms around a group of people, saying welcome and we're here for you and we want this to be a successful experience for you. I think we know that if we make that initial experience that much better, positive, warm and embracing, that it is likely to reduce barriers for families to make it better. So it's really, really been great. Jeff has helped bring that to a new level, but this whole team has made that happen also. Thank you for supporting.
We had natural helpers, Nicole Vandermead and the food staff.
Yeah, friends of Rachel's students here, it was great.
It was really well done.
Frankie Lovett performing again, unbelievable, get your tickets fast. She's awesome. Thanks.
Is there anything else?
No.
The only other thing I'll, I'll note is that directly to the left of Board Vice President, Dr. Christina Lee, is the new Medical Director for the Center for Community Health and Prevention One, Dr. Susan Gasparino. Proud of you and great luck and great success with that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
He hesitated, seconded by Carrie Lynn, all those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.